We're live? Thank you. Good morning, everyone. It's the 15th of February and welcome to the Ordinary Council meeting held here at One Nicholas Street. I call attendance at commencement and I see everyone here except for councillor Jacob Madison. He's in the building, okay, so I'm sure. Okay, so I'm sure he'll be back in a second. Thank you. We now move on. We now move to the acknowledgement of country and Ipswich City Council respectfully acknowledges the traditional owners as custodians of the land and waters we share. We pay our respects to the elders past, present and emerging as the keepers of the traditions, customs, cultures and stories that are proud people. And we're very fortunate this morning to have our opening prayer by Pastor Matt Anstey from the Kruger Parade Baptist Church. If I could ask Pastor Anstey to come forward, please. Good morning, Pastor.
Thank you so much, Mayor, and thank you so much for having us here and being able to open council with prayer.
So feel free to introduce yourself and Kruger Parade Baptist Church, what you do. I know it's a fast-growing congregation and then lead us into prayer.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, Matt Anstey from Kruger Baptist, just over in Redbank. And we have a great, very diverse congregation and probably reflects well the city of Ipswich with the different cultures and people that we have there. People who love the city and have been involved here for many years and some who are very new residents. And so we get a very diverse mix of opinions and thoughts, but all have a real heart for being here in the city and all grateful. We pray for you guys as councillors, we're grateful for your involvement and the decisions you make that we know will affect the city for a long time. I'm also aware that with elections coming up in a few weeks' time, this is a bit of a weird time to be in council. And so, ta-da, I just had a word for you that, from the book of Proverbs, that says, "Just trust in the Lord with all your heart, lean not on your own understanding, but in all your ways acknowledge Him and He'll direct your paths." So I'd love to pray for you this morning as we open council. Well, God, we just thank you so much that you are great and overall things, you know what the future will hold and what the present is happening. And so I pray, Lord, that you would help this meeting move forward with great wisdom and care. Lord, we pray that you would use the gifts and abilities of each of our councillors to be able to make the very best decisions for our city. We pray for the flourishing of this city, we pray it might continue to grow. Lord, we pray for those people who are broken and struggling at this point in time. We thank you for the wise decisions that will be made that will help those who are struggling to have better lives, those who are seeking to grow and develop, to reach those ends. And we pray, Lord, that you continue to guide and lead these councillors to make the very best decisions, to be united, but also to challenge one another, to be able to bring the best outcomes for this city. Praise in your name, Jesus, and we thank you for your goodness and your love. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor Matt, really appreciate that, thank you. We're now moving on to apologies and leave of absence, and I have none. Okay, no worries. And we've received notification that councillor Madison will be here shortly. Item five, condolences, there are none. Item six, tributes, there are none. Item seven, presentation petitions, there are none. Item eight, presentations, deputations, there are none. Item nine, public participation, there are none. Item ten, matters of public interest, there are none. We'll now move on to declarations of interest in the matters on the agenda. May I say, councillor Feckner, you have one?
Thanks, Mayor. In accordance with section 150 EQ of the Local Government Act, I councillor Andrew Feckner informed the meeting that I have a declarable conflict of interest in item 15.6 entitled Report of Ipswich Central Redevelopment Committee. The nature of the declarable conflict of interests are my interests in both A1A Proprietary Limited and Bar Heisenberg Proprietary Limited, both located in the top of town in Ipswich. Plan on dealing with the conflict by leaving the room or the matter is considered and voted on.
Thank you, councillor. Any other conflicts of interest? No, thank you. I now move on to item 12.1, which is the confirmation of the ordinary minutes. So I'll move that the minutes of the Ordinary Council meeting held on the 25th of January 2024 be confirmed. Do I have a second, uh, thank you Deputy Mayor? Any errors, omissions, corrections? I'll put that to the vote, those in favour? Thank you, unanimous and carried. We move on to item 13.1, which is a merril minute. And as a merril minute, it's moved and seconded by myself. And this merril minute seeks to advocate to the Queensland Government on behalf of Ipswich residents to bring a permanent police presence to Town Square, Red Bank Plains. Ipswich grandmother Violene White was stabbed to death in the underground car park on Saturday the 3rd of February 2024, leaving our community shattered. The overwhelming community sentiment following this tragedy has been for a more visible and permanent police presence in Ipswich's largest suburb, Red Bank Plains. A focus by the Queensland Police Service on the local community would give residents greater confidence about their safety and reduce incidents of crime and antisocial behaviour. The motion itself is asking for Ipswich City Council right to the Minister for Police and Community Safety and the Honourable Mark Ryan MP and the Queensland Police Commissioner Katrina, so Caterina Carroll, for the installation of a permanent police shopfront at Red, at Town Square, Red Bank Plains. I just want to open this up for, I guess, discussion. I know that when this tragedy occurred on the Saturday the 3rd, I put this merril motion in on the Wednesday a few days afterwards. I'm very open to amending that particular motion. I just wanted to, I know the number of councillors would like to speak to it. And so that motion there, I'm not hell-bent, I'm just very interested to hear from councillors, to see what they're hearing from the community and moving forward. So I'll open it up for any discussion. I think councillor Ireland?
Mayor, I'd like to move an amendment to insert a clause B that council officially write to the Attorney General of Queensland to enact a new law called Violene's Law. This legislation would grant judges the authority to impose stricter sentences on serious youth repeat offenders and that bail conditions be reviewed for those who have previously offended. By swiftly implementing Violene's Law, which provides wraparound services and spearheads a national youth crime intervention framework, the Queensland Government can effectively combat youth crime and build safer communities.
No, thank you. Obviously, as a merril minute, I'm the mover and the second, I just look for any discussion from councillors about that particular B. Yep, councillor Tully?
Yeah, I won't speak to the whole thing, but obviously it's a very sensitive issue and I'm supportive of the motion that's been moved. And I'll have a bit more to say about that and why. But that might be a two-pronged approach that would seem fairly reasonable. You know, laws have been named in this state after persons before, and I think it would show that we're not just looking at one focus to a very difficult issue in Queensland and in our city in particular.
In that case, that's the mover and second, I'm happy for recommendation B to be part of the motions to be discussed here. Would you like to speak to a bit more councillor Ireland?
Mayor, are we able to get a copy of the exact wording of that?
Yes, have you sent that to anyone, councillor Ireland? It would be good if these things are emailed out to people beforehand. I'll just wait for this to be put up on the screen for everyone to see. Well, we're here, I'd just like to also welcome Cindy McCalliffe, who's in the public gallery. Thank you very much, Cindy, for being here and your beautiful nature and the whole approach that your family have taken towards this. And our deepest condolences and sympathies are to you. Thank you, Cindy. Thank you. Okay. In speaking to this, since Violene's tragic death, there have been hundreds of flowers and candles laid, a community vigil, meeting of community elders and leaders and petitions for more police and support for the White family. The call that has been laid, that's the most concerning to me is, Mayor, is people in our community no longer feel safe. Our community are telling us that they fear for their safety and want to see more action and a permanent police presence in Red Bank Plains. In speaking with Violene's family, they also want to see people come together as a community, to not feel fearful or scared of their neighbours. Our wonderful police officers and detectives do amazing work each and every day. They reacted decisively and swiftly in the wake of this traumatic event. However, preventing crime is better than solving crime. That's why I'm putting forward this merril minute today. While we here at a local government level are not responsible for policing, we are here to advocate for our communities and our community's behalf to the state government to implore them to listen to the Ipswich community. By formally writing to the Minister for Police and Community Safety and the Police Commissioner, we throw the full weight of council and the community we represent behind these pleas. We must all work together to make our residents feel more secure and find solutions to ensure our community is as safe as possible. By installing a permanent police shopfront at the Town Square, Red Bank Plains, we're asking for a proactive police presence. By working closely with the businesses and the community at Town Square, officers will be better able to respond to issues of concern before a crime is committed and innocent people are targeted. And most importantly, instill confidence back into our community. I'll open it up for other discussion. Councillor Tully?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. As I indicated previously, I support the motion and the amendment. I think it gives us a two-pronged approach to a very serious issue. I do know that the police in Queensland have moved away to some extent from police shopfronts, but perhaps they should be moving back, given the circumstances in the last couple of weeks. Some of these issues, it's a coalescence of a lot of issues about youth crime in Queensland. This is not just one suburb, but one only has to look at the media of Townsville, Rockhampton, Gold Coast, Ipswich, Brisbane, where youth crime is, I'd say rampant. The concerns of the community are this, that a lot of people, young people, appear before a court, are granted bail regularly and routinely and to be found to be allegedly committing offences again, sometimes the very same night. I think that's one issue that needs to be looked at. And I'm just speaking broadly because this is a broad issue, it's not just opening a shopfront at Red Bank Plains. I think that's one issue that needs to be addressed. The other is the right of the public to know what's going on in our courts, including the children's court. People don't know, people don't know, are they being granted bail? The media are routinely denied access to the courts. The Premier has indicated that he's prepared to look at that and I fully support that, simply because even though the names of the alleged offenders can't be revealed or any identification of their family, it gives the public an opportunity to understand the routine, what is happening, what penalties are being imposed, even though the persons aren't identified. And that is, I find that an issue that people in the community regularly raise with me, they don't know what's going on behind the closed doors of the courts. I don't think it affects the, you know, in the court, there's a lot of people, there's the magistrate or judge, there's prosecutors, defence people. Having some media there to report the matter wouldn't be, in my view, a great imposition at all. The other issue, and I'll just conclude on this, is about jail sometimes being the last resort. People are just let out and given chance after chance after chance. I think Townsville is a very good example of car stealing, which is regular and routine. The public is concerned, and I'm not making this as just a wide swipe at the community or community policing and what's happening in this state. But it all came to a head unfortunately in our own city just two weeks ago. And unfortunately, we're raising this today and public awareness. I've found that people are a bit scared to go to shopping centres, they know that, you know, in a lot of them, not all of them, some of them people congregate. And it's, to me, a very, very difficult issue to raise. It's not often that we have, oh, I think this is the first time, you know, we talk about safe city and security cameras and whatever. But just as with police and with security cameras, there's only a limit to what can be done as a local government. So I'm certainly supportive of this motion.
Thank you, councillor Doyle.
Thank you, Mayor. Absolutely acknowledge and concur with councillor Tully's commentary around this. Just in relation to A, your original merril minute, I'm thinking that we should potentially add a second part to that, which would be a second sentence that we write requesting the Police Minister to consider installing the mobile police van indefinitely whilst a solution around a permanent police beat there is investigated. As we know, that will take some time to put in place. I've heard from the community that they're concerned once the media spotlight is off this tragic issue, you know, the old practices will sadly return. So I see as an immediate solution might be, yeah, a placement of the mobile van, so.
Do you have something that you'd like to maybe make that recommendation B and move councillor Ireland's one to recommendation C perhaps?
And so just before I move or suggest the amendment, I just want to speak to councillor Ireland's proposed Violene's Law, which I am absolutely supportive of. We've seen, obviously, the introduction of Jack's Law and just out of tragedy, how there can be a positive change. And that was around the use of wands for the detection of knives. I am a mother of three young sons. I am absolutely horrified with two of those boys now over 18, that they are going out, sometimes in Brisbane, and the carrying of knives has become commonplace, particularly in nightclubs. I am hearing and I am hoping it's an urban myth, but some clubs, some licensed premises actually have lockers for storage of these knives. We don't want to go the same way as America, where it's commonplace or even legal to carry weapons. So I see this as a great opportunity, councillor Ireland, for something positive, some positive change to come out of this for Violene's family would be just amazing. My only commentary would be that I think it's a little bit broad, you know, again, like on Jack's Law, the idea was the wand. But I guess that's further work that could be come out of what's proposed with Violene's Law. But just back in relation to A, I think it's just a further sentence, Mayor, where we say, further to this, we request. Oh, so sorry, under A, Vic, a second sentence under A.
So still in part of motion A?
Yeah, yep. So we, Ipswich City Council writes to the Minister for Police for the installation, further to this, we also request the installation of the mobile police van indefinitely. Pending the establishment of a permanent facility. Oh, yep. And if I can just finish, sorry, Mayor.
I'm happy to accept that.
Yeah, and I think this is a sentiment of most councils. We don't want to tell the police how to do their job. They are doing an amazing job. Like us, they have very, very limited resources and the advocacy needs to continue for Ipswich to get increased numbers. So I don't want to tell the police how to do their job. I know they've looked into police beats and have introduced the mobile police beat as an alternative solution. And I understand there's probably work behind the scenes looking for other solutions, you know, for modern-day policing. So I don't want to tell them how to do their job. But we can ask if this would be suitable.
Thank you, that's a good amendment.
Councillor Doyle, do you want to tighten up my Violene's Law one as well then?
Thank you, councillor Ireland. I really would not like to do that until, you know, we have spoken with Violene's family because I am sure they have some really amazing ideas to come out of this tragic loss. Like I said, Jack's Law, the use of wands, I'm not sure what they're thinking around this.
Yes. Is with the family, so they have agreed to what I've said, but I'm happy to have it amended as necessary.
Well, just an example for me, it's mandatory placement of CCTV on any private organisation. You know, shopping centres should be obliged by law to implement this. We know through our safe city that it is challenging with privacy legislation. However.
So can you use your microphone, please?
Sorry, councillor Doyle, I think maybe a correction, further to this, we also request the installation of a mobile police van indefinitely pending the establishment?
Thank you, yes.
Thank you. Do you think councillor Doyle, you had something you'd like to say?
I'm just following on from councillor Ireland and councillor Doyle's commentary in relation to the CCTV. It's also about vacant homes in the area. It's like, it's a, it's a dynamic problem and it stretches across all levels of government and the community. And speaking to. And speaking to the sergeants as well and what they struggle with. We all need to work together and we do that quite well. And I think that these ideas for mandatory CCTV, fixing poles and fences around establishments, making sure that there's no power points available in toilets so that children can loiter there and hang out. There's all these different elements that, you know, can change. And it's out of our wheelhouse, I guess, but we all need to work together. And I think this is a great start.
I guess what was, sorry, Mayor, if I may, what was driving my commentary, I guess, around an idea of increased CCTV as Chair of Ipswich Central Redevelopment and obviously overseeing Nicholas Street Precinct and working closely with Larry and Safe City. We implement, you know, a very high level of security here as a centre owner, if you like. Our tenants quite rightly expect us to put in place an appropriate level of security to keep both them and their customers safe. Now, I'm sure we can all see very good and very poor examples of where shopping centres deal with this problem. Councillor Fekner and I work very closely at both the Vale Fair and Red Bank Plaza with our community members. And we, at both of those centres, we have not witnessed significant antisocial behaviour. What we do see is a very strong security presence. And so, you know, there is a direct correlation there. And for the shopping centres that aren't doing the right thing, and I understand why the police are moving away from police beats in shopping centres. We will see some centres reduce their security numbers and relying on the police to do the private security work. And that is not on. As a commercial operator, those centres need to be engaging their own police and not drawing and tying up police resources that we desperately need in our community. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Doyle. councillor Tully?
Just as part of that general discussion, and I take the point that the paragraph B, which is already part of the motion, is just limited to two issues. The imposition of stricter sentences and bail conditions. But I think a number of other issues have come out and that perhaps that part of the motion should be broader. I'm not moving this at this stage, I'll just invite you and the other councillors to identify a broader approach. That is to keep the first paragraph that officially writes to the Attorney General of Queensland to enact a new law called Violene's Law. And to add the words in that paragraph, to implement all relevant initiatives to identify and reduce youth crime in Queensland. To implement all relative initiatives to identify and reduce youth crime in Queensland. That would keep it a very broad, and we could still identify what those are, cameras and other initiatives which are already in the motion. Otherwise, we're just limiting it to a very narrow focus.
I'll just check with councillor, you're okay with that?
I am, Mayor. I think that it will give the white family some comfort that there is something that Violene's death has promoted for Queensland.
Mayor, I might just read that again.
Thank you councillor Tully.
So that's to delete the second two paragraphs. And to continue on, to implement all relevant initiatives to identify and reduce youth crime in Queensland. And could we just sort of see that last paragraph again? If that can, that might still tie into the generality of that, the last paragraph we removed. Not the middle one, the last one.
So keep that one?
Yeah, maybe to keep that one as well.
No, I think going down, I think remove the paragraph that starts, this legislation? Is that what you're looking at?
Yeah, that's right.
Remove that?
And I think, sorry to be. Yeah, I'll just move that and it's subject to your agreement or the vote of the council.
I'll just double check because councillor Doyle didn't move this amendment, or did us?
I'd really like to have, I think the point that I'm trying to make is that that the authorities impose stricter sentences on serious youth crime repeat offenders. That's what I'm trying to put across.
But you'd like to keep that other paragraph in there?
Well, at least those sentences, please, all those words.
Do you mind just pulling up that paragraph back in there, Vicky, if that's okay, just to? I think that paragraph does add more to it. Yeah, so I'd be inclined to leave that in there as well.
Could we put, Mayor, perhaps would also grant judges?
Would also, so that first one of that second paragraph?
Yeah, so to make it clear, they're not limiting it to that.
Would also. Okay. Thank you. Any other discussion?
Yeah, Mayor, can I, through you, just ask councillor Ireland, so the reference to Violene's Law, has that been something that has been drafted?
No.
You're proposing that it be drafted for legislation?
Oh.
Okay.
I think enact a new law, I think that's.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, and before they draft it, they would have to do community consultation and other things as well.
Yeah, yeah.
I think that. I'm happy with what councillor Ireland has there.
It's a very touchy subject when, if we were to pretend we're criminologists or law enforcement agency. With councillor Doyle's permission, maybe change the wording for mobile police van to it's referred to as a mobile police facility, an MPF.
I'm happy with that. In summing up, thank you very much for people contributing to this. It also feels more meaningful to having Violene's daughter here in the public gallery. Thank you Cindy. I just thought that people know too that last week when I was met with Cindy and also her dad Victor, Victor made a request of this council, and I'm just sort of working through a few things and I'll come to you. But he's asked for a memorial for Violene. And in particular, the memorial will not be in the town square, but whether it's a road or a park or something like that. They've asked very humbly of the council to consider that. So at some later stage, I'll be coming to council after we have a discussion on what that will be and work with the family on that as well, to make sure that we have some, a memorial of Violene White in our city.
Mayor, I'd just like to thank Violene's daughter Cindy for having the courage to come in today. Thank you.
Thank you very much Cindy. Thank you. I'll put motions A and B to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Item fourteen is a business outstanding, and there is nil. Item fifteen, we now move on to the reception and consideration of committee reports. And the first one is the report of the Growth Infrastructure and Waste Committee of the first of February twenty twenty four. Would anyone like to ask the relevant council officers anything on this report? In that case, I move that council adopt the report of the Growth Infrastructure and Waste Committee of the first of February twenty twenty four. Do I have a seconder? Thank you councillor Tully. Any discussion? No, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Next item is fifteen point two, the report of the Governance and Transparency Committee of the first of February. I'll hand over to the Chair of that committee to see how he would like this report managed.
Just as per the recommendation before everyone this morning, happy to move that.
So I move that council adopt the report of the Governance and Transparency Committee of the first of February twenty twenty four. Do you second that councillor Madsen?
I moved it.
You moved it, okay, I'll second it, thank you. Sorry, I didn't see. So, Deputy Mayor, you'd like to second that? I'll put you down as a seconder, Deputy Mayor as a seconder. Any discussion? If there's been no discussion, put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you, that's carried. We're now go to item fifteen point three, the report of the Community Culture and Arts and Sports Committee of the first of February twenty twenty four. I'll hand over to the Chair of that committee, how would he like this?
Thank you, Mayor, I'd like to move that council adopt the report of the Community Culture, Arts and Sports Committee of the first of February two thousand and twenty four.
Thank you, do I have a seconder for that? Thank you councillor Consum. Any discussion? Put the matter to the vote, those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. We're now moving on to item fifteen point four, the report of the Economic and Industry Development Committee of the first of February twenty twenty four. I'll hand over to the Chair of that committee to see how she would like this report managed.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that the minutes of the Economic and Industry Development Committee held on, excuse me, twenty eighth of November be confirmed.
Thank you. Do I have a seconder? Thank you councillor Doyle. Any discussion?
Just a point of order, I think we need to actually adopt the motions in there, not just adopt the minutes, but, you know.
I'm sorry.
The recommendations contained therein be adopted.
I move that council adopt the report of the Economic and Industry Development Committee, number two thousand four, number one, of first of February twenty twenty four. Sorry, that's my mistake.
Yep. So I took it, she was recommending what was in the. Okay, oh, okay, thank you for the, councillor Doyle, just check that you're happy, okay, to second that? Thank you. Any other discussion? Put the matter to the vote, those in favour. Thank you, it's unanimous and carried. We now move on to item fifteen point five, the report of the Environment Sustainability Committee of the first of February twenty twenty four. I'll hand over to the Chair of that committee to see how he would like this.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to move that council adopt the report of the Environment Sustainability Committee meeting number one of the first of February twenty twenty four.
Thank you. Would I like to second that? Thank you councillor Doyle. Any discussion?
Yes, Mayor, I'd just like to highlight the wonderful presentation that was provided to committee by Ripley Valley State Secondary College. The two middle school leaders gave an outstanding presentation.
Thank you. I'll put the matter to the vote, those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. We now move on to item fifteen point six.
Sorry, Mayor, I was in the restroom earlier and missed the declarations phase. So I'd like to, in accordance with section one hundred and fifty EQ of the Local Government Act, I, councillor Jacob Madsen, informed the meeting that over declarable conflict of interest in item fifteen point six titled, what is it? Report of Ipswich Central Redevelopment Committee of one February twenty twenty four. The nature of the declarable conflict of interest is, I'm a former member of the executive of the Ipswich Trades Hall and Labour Day Committee, and our building, the Ipswich Trades Hall, is adjacent to all of council's redevelopment works. As a result of that conflict of interest, I'll leave the meeting room while the matter is discussed and voted on.
Thank you. Thank you. Next one is fifteen point six, the report of the Ipswich Central Redevelopment Committee of the first of February twenty twenty four. I'll hand over to the Chair of that committee to see how she would like this report managed.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to move that council adopt the report of the Ipswich Central Redevelopment Committee from the first of February twenty twenty four.
Thank you, do I have a seconder for that? Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Any discussion? Put the matter to the vote, those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Now move on to item sixteen point one, which is the Q two annual plan for twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four quarterly performance report, be received and noted. Would anyone like to speak to the relevant council officers on this report? In that case, I will move the recommendation. Do I have a seconder? Thank you councillor Fekner.
I'm speaking of this, I'm delighted to highlight this report and the notable achievements of our council in the last quarter. The progress of the new planning scheme and LGIP, the local government infrastructure plan, is on track to be implemented this year and currently under budget. The leveraging twenty thirty two hour roadmap to the Olympic and Paralympic Games launched in December, and we're already proud to be a co-host city. But this document will ensure that we maximise the economic and social opportunities the games will bring. Council has provided more than two hundred and eleven thousand dollars in community funding to local initiatives, and we've taken on the management of the Red Bank Plains Community Centre to ensure this valuable asset can continue to respond to the community's needs. Council run events have given the city an economic boost of two point five million dollars in the past quarter, and where one point five million visitors came to Ipswich. Our work on the Ipswich to Springfield Central Public Transport Corridor project continues with the project steering committee endorsing three options of transport modes for detailed assessments. Council also put forward its submission to the SEQ City Livability Fund, which has seen more than eighteen million dollars spent on improving our suburbs. At the top of our list was upgrading the Red Bank Plains Recreation Reserve Sporting Fields and the Tivoli Sporting Complex. It's also great to see Ipswich Waste Services are also making positive gains with an average of twenty one percent of waste diverted from landfill due to our curbside recycling service. I'll open this up for any other commentary or discussion.
There being none, I'll put the matter to the vote, those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you, it's unanimous and carried. Move on to item sixteen point two, which is the CEO organisational performance. Would anyone like to speak to the relevant council officer or the CEO on this? I will move this report. Do I have a seconder? Thank you councillor Doyle.
Speaking to this, it's great to see the community continues to engage with council on our initiatives and programmes through Shape Your Ipswich. We have nine articulate workshops now open for registration, and these workshops are designed for emerging and established creatives to learn about securing funding grants and how to earn money from their art. We also have the twenty twenty four Regional Arts Development Fund, or RADIF, now open for applications as well. And there have been ten thousand visitors to these art pages, and there are further twenty one thousand four hundred visits to our Ipswich Central page, which went live late in November. The Ipswich Central page covers how council's developing a cultural heart and creating places for people with green walkable streets and to light up Ipswich projects. You can find out more about our two new square and crossing projects in our Ipswich Central as well. Also look forward to the Critical Enable the Infrastructure page going live later this month, which will have more information on Ipswich's advocacy efforts to upgrade the Cunningham, the Warrigo and the Centenary Highways for our community. I'll open up any other discussion.
Put the matter to the vote, those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you, it's unanimous and carried. We'll now move on to item sixteen point, my apologies. I think I was meant to ask because it was a late report for FOGO. Okay. So item sixteen point three is not listed on the original agenda. So I'm going to be moving that in accordance with section nine point three point two of council's meetings procedures policy. The council grant permission for the consideration of item sixteen point three titled Citywide FOGO Curbside Collection Service Update. I will move that, do I have a seconder for that? Thank you councillor Consum. I'll open that up for discussion. I'll put the matter to the vote, those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried, thank you. We now move on to item sixteen point three, which is the Citywide FOGO Curbside Collection Service Update. Does anyone have any questions of the relevant council officers on this matter? In that case, I will move recommend. In that case, I will move recommendations A through to E, and I think some of them will be very important, so I am going to read it out. So the expansion of the core curbside waste collection service include FOGO collection be delayed until twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six financial year. And B, that subject to the commencement date of the FOGO service, the opt-in FOGO service continue with a prorated charge to be applied for all non-rated opt-in rental food, organics, garden, organic services prior to the commencement of a new service. And C, that the budget implications of the revised commencement date be included in future council budget submissions. And D, that council note to the funding commitment now provided by the Queensland State Government in a confidential attachment. And E, that council note or multi-stage communication, education and engagement programmes will be developed in coming months. So I'll move that. Do I have a seconder? Thank you, councillor Consum. In speaking to this, I'm pleased to see that we're progressing with our planning for a move to a three bin collection service with sixty eight thousand FOGO bins purchased and six specialised waste trucks on their way. About fifteen thousand dark green bin lids have been replaced with a new red lid, red lids, to make sure everyone across the city has the same coloured waste bin, to make sure this transition is as smooth as possible. And while council remains committed to reducing landfill, ensuring organic waste is captured and recycled, council and our community have significant concerns about the uncertainty of the organics market, the current legal action underway by council and the state, and most importantly, the noxious waste odours plaguing our city. This report is asking council to delay our citywide FOGO rollout until we have greater clarity around these issues, which I intend to support today. This step also aligns with funding recently received from the Queensland Government to support our citywide FOGO rollout. I'm delighted to see that council and state are now aligned in our commitment to ensure any future FOGO is sent to a provider that is compliant and offers a best practice approach to composting organic waste. Council now has additional time to ensure a smooth citywide transition to FOGO in partnership with the Queensland Government, allowing more time to focus on awareness and support for our community as we make this important change. I'll open it up for other discussion. Councillor?
Mayor, I really want to see somewhere or some level of government tell these composters that they have a very short period of time to go in vessel composting. They've been promising to do it for years now, but we're not getting anywhere, so I don't know how any level of government can do it, but I'd really like to see some timelines put on in vessel composting.
Thank you, councillor Ireland. Any other discussion? I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Item seventeen, there are no notices of motion. Eighteen questions on notice, there are none. So I'll close the meeting now at nine forty four AM. Thank you.